Taking time out of their schedule and come here and hear what we have to talk about. Today's meeting is going to talk about fiduciary responsibility that was alleged that the board did not have. So, I can go into a lot of details. I don't want to waste any time, so I'm going to turn this meeting over to Cheryl, who's the vice president. Shiv, would you please act as secretary?
Certainly.
Okay, because the president can't be the secretary. All right. So yours is.
All right. Good morning, and thank you for being here right before a holiday. So, one of the reasons we're here today is because the world is changing, and now information goes out rapidly by email, newsletters, blogs. And so, they say good news travels fast and sensational news even faster. So, that brings us here to the meeting this morning. Unfortunately, a board can't respond quite as fast. It's got up to seven people on it. Our votes are of equal weight. Florida regulations require that our responses be well-coordinated and documented. Again, the reason we're meeting today. So, today, we're going to discuss together, you and I, you and this board, two matters that are of importance. And again, that's a good point. If everyone could put their phone on vibrate. So, Florida regulations do require that this meeting be documented, well-coordinated, and the vote coordinated, if any are made, at the board level. So, again, I hope you'll participate in this discussion. The purpose of the meeting is to cite two allegations in social media, allegations that are harmful to your association if true. One is, and I'm using the words of the social media, Siegel's pipe gift scheme. So, that is the first item we will be discussing. The second item we will be discussing is, I quote, "over 18,000 in alleged missing pipe funds," unquote. So, we're going to address comments made by the author of that social media, and our goal is to see if your board has acted as a good fiduciary in this matter. Now, fiduciary means being a good financial steward. Okay, so just as a company meets with its shareholder when it sees bad press in the news, our goal is to talk with you, our unit owners, because we answer only to you. Now, I've put some pencils here up front, so you can write down any questions you might have. If you would like paper and pencil, please come up and take some now, because there will be time for you to have questions, and your opportunity will come before final motions. So, let's get started with the headlining pipe gift scheme. I need to go through a little bit of backstory, and then the whole board will get involved and go through the details. Now, in 2016, I had been here at Height the Year, and I remember coming to a board meeting where a unit owner said, "Why aren't we tipping Moxie at Christmas time anymore? She cleans our catwalks and our windows." And I remember Stanley saying at that time that rules have changed, and it's not allowed. Well, let me tell you how rules have changed, okay? While gifts can be given per Florida statute 718 even today, it has to be done so in a completely different way. So, for example, accepting gifts from vendors is a no-no, but gifts to association employees, if given as bonuses, have to be issued as 1099s and declared as taxable. Gifts to volunteers are a no-no. Accepting gifts, excuse me, gifts to association officers from the association are allowed, if only put in the bylaws. But the main thing affecting the types of gifts we're talking about is gifts can no longer come out of what are called common expenses. That's a term found in statute 718.115, which means basically operating expenses. As of the change in laws, you can no longer extract gifts or pay gifts from that account. In fact, the law says if you wish to do so, you actually have to bring your unit owners together and amend your bylaws. So, this is a horrible, complicated mess for gifts, and the only people who enjoy it probably are the lawyers. So, what ended up happening in 2016 is we were given advice that we should no longer give gifts. And so, now, I'm going to turn some questions to the board and say, "Do others on this board remember a time when we ceased gifting during the holiday season?" Board? Yes, you remember. Okay. Do us anyone else recall that this board did so in response to legal counsel because of ever-changing legal landscape, all these laws I just told you, namely, a recent court case saying specifically not to tip out of operational expenses? Does anyone remember that? You do? Okay.
Yeah, I was the one who got the advice from the attorney.
Okay, very good. All right, in fact, I'd like to show that we have meeting minutes from December 14th, 2016, attesting to what we just said here today, that we are no longer to give gifts if anyone wishes to give gifts personally to Moxie, for example, they certainly do to, but this association will not. Okay, prior to 2016, did we report our gifts in a separate line item per Florida statute?
We did.
All right. Did we discuss gifts at our board meeting prior to gifting?
Yes.
Okay. Was our property manager meeting their financial obligations and how these gifts were recorded in that line item? Kathy? Very good. All right, so, couple more questions. Did we cease giving gifts in 2016 and thereafter with the change in law?
Absolutely.
Okay, did we have any infractions? Did we have any court costs, any arbitrations related to any aspect of improper gifting?
Absolutely not.
All right. So, I quote our local newsletter, "Was this an illegal cash grab by Stanley Siegel?" And I quote that. Or was it a normal practice used by condo boards prior to a change in condo law when you were told to shift from operational expenses to amending a bylaw? Was this a normal practice, or was this an illegal cash grab? What does this board think? I would argue it's a normal practice. I can see no other, no other, no other answer. So, this board changed how it operated. Quiet, please, if we could. This board changed how it operated in response to changing law. It recorded the change in the minutes of the December 2016 meeting, and this social media allegation has no merit beyond, in my opinion, the desire to sensationalize a topic, center this allegation on Stanley Siegel, and impugn the integrity of your board. May we move to the next topic?
Let's go.
We will have questions, a whole opportunity.
Kathy has.
Yeah, can I say some? Our company follows the rules, especially since 2016.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Became more complicated.
Much more complicated, many, many rules. Let us proceed now to the missing funds allegation. This is a very serious allegation.
Excuse me, Cheryl, can we go back to, if we're going to be finished with the first one? When did we?
Actually, I will open it for questions, and if you could kindly write them down, you will have an opportunity for those questions. I would like to continue and do all questions at the end.
Is there any special reason why a Florida statute 718 doesn't say you have to do it that way?
No, it certainly doesn't say you have to do it that way.
So, as long as we're on that one with Kathy, my question was, how was this list of the dispersments kept?
Okay, let us proceed. We will do it, Helene. Certainly, there's no reason, there's certainly no reason not to accept your question. Could you repeat your question again?
How was the list of, how did you maintain a record of dispersments? If you're saying that it used to be legal and now it's not, and there was a law change, then how did you keep a record of who was given what?
What was required by law was to authorize the gifts, was to authorize the gifts at a board meeting. These were not being dispensed in the form of bonuses, so they don't result in individual 1099 forms or W-2s being given. My understanding is that at an aggregate level, it was simply required to be identified out of line items. Is that correct? Do you wish to add to this?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's not what, that's what we did.
But why would you want to do it then?
It was on the budget as a line item, and that's how we distributed it.
But then, how would you account for?
It's accounted for because that line item shows in cash flow reports, and it shows as a dispersment.
Okay, let me clarify my question. If you take a check for, and it changed numbers every year, 1750, up 850, down 1600, if it changed every year, what was the reason for the change? And how did you, how do we know if you take a check and cash it, and then hand out, you know, nice envelopes with cards, best wishes for the holidays, how do you know that money was dispersed with no paper trail?
Well, this is the reason, in fact, you cite an excellent example. This is exactly why the law was changed. You're writing the drive, you're citing the driving reasons for why this law was changed.
And the.
Excellent point. That's why it's not done anymore.
We, that's understood. However, if you have a check for $2,000 that's cashed, and you disperse $1,500, where do you prove that the other $500 was spent on gifts?
Well, you, if it comes up.
You're looking for, you're looking for 100% disclosure.
In some years, you gave more, and other years, you cut down on what you dispensed.
Was there any reason for that?
Yes, in fact, consider the companies that you work for. I'm sure many of you have worked in companies that give out Christmas bonuses at the end of the year. Some years, when you've had a lot of income come in, and your income's been accounted for, and employees, and you haven't had a lot of expenses, you can allocate to set aside a slightly larger amount. In other years, when it's been harder to get income, or you've had excessive expenses, or perhaps you really don't have any stellar performers on your team at all, you can certainly elect not to pay one nickel.
So.
There's nothing that says one should expect in any way, shape, or form that Christmas gifts be the same from year to year. In fact, I would say many column inches were dedicated in this newsletter to creating the assumption that small Christmas gifts, which are a tiny percent of our budget at that time, should be equal from year to year, as if there is insinuating.
It doesn't indicate that at all. The way I read it, it was.
No, you read, and I do have.
1750, one year, the next year, 2,600. Now, if you want to say we were really flush and great that year, I would say, why didn't we spend it on height?
I would say that at that point, we probably had somebody who did above and beyond that allowed us to be a well-performing association.
And do you not think that that really should be documented?
I think that it probably is at the level of having discussions at a board meeting, but at that point in time, the percentage of our budget dedicated to gifts was so int, would you like to speak on this?
Well, I'm a treasurer, and I just took this position recently, but my recollection is when I saw one kind of paper which Stanley had, which detailed how much money was sent to every person, you know? So, at least I don't remember, I saw that paper, one paper, that it detailed everything. So, if it's detailed in that thing, then he must have some kind of record in that.
So, then, it would be nice if that record was shown.
He's not obligated any money, I don't think so.
I don't know how any of us would know. Why would we not give gratuities in the form of a check that could be followed as opposed to cash? We all know the line, "Not only must you avoid impropriety, you must avoid the appearance of impropriety."
And we all agree that adopted improved business processes, absolutely.
Well, that's nice.
That's now.
That's now. Yes, it is now.
And it's nice.
It's a moot point, it's all over.
It's not a moot point.
Yes, yours it is.
Yes, it is.
It's not moot, you're, excuse me, because you're answering in generalities. You're using probably in this kind of situation, in that kind of situation, but you're, as just stated, you're not nailing it down. And it's not a moot point. That's the reason we're here, is because of the allegations that were made are based on some past history. Has that history been really answered? It doesn't seem.
It has been answered to the extent as required in the accounting records.
I'm sorry, please don't two talk at once. Did you want us?
What's your problem?
Don't point your finger at me. I had that with you once, and I don't want to have it again.
What are we pointing at? You're pointing.
He accused me, and I have a witness, he accused me of taking money.
You are so, you are so wrong. You're wrong.
Stanley.
Regardless of that, the disservice will be removed, regardless of size. Now, the matter is alleged lack of fiduciary responsibility. It is not a matter of exceeding the minimum requirements required for identifying gifts. The requirements required were to approve it at a board meeting, to put it in a line item. I understand you're seeking more. Bottom line is, we have met our requirement in declaring gifts. It was discussed at board meetings. Our meetings are summary meetings, which is all that is generally required. Transcriptions are not required by this board for meeting minutes. They have not been to this time. If they had been transcriptions, perhaps it would be there. We met legal requirements for these gifts. It stopped. All parties agreed that was not a good way to go about things, but that is the way it was done. It was pulled from operational expenses, paid, and ceased when the law changed. Period. You might wish there were more, but there's not.
There's.
I think we should go on to the next one.
I do think we should go on to the next one. Let us go to the missing funds allocation. This is a serious assertion, and I am reading directly. This is a direct quote. Height C. resident Helene Harris.
Helene Harris.
Helene Harris, excuse me, resigned as treasurer earlier this year over 18,000 in alleged missing pipe funds that First Service could not explain, is running against Siegel for the position of director-at-large. While she may have resigned from Siegel's board, Harris has not quit fighting his financially questionable ways and disrespect for unit owners, unquote. I want to reemphasize, these are the words of the social media writer, these are not the words of Helene. Okay. Now, I would like to remind our unit owners that aside from monitoring our internal financial procedures and cash flow, this board relies on complaints to be brought directly to its attention. Your board is a managed entity, a type of corporation, and it must deal with assertions of impropriety at a board meeting, not through Twitter fights, not through newsletter rebuttals, not through hearsay. Okay, so again, we're going to focus on this statement, "over 18,000 in missing funds," and we are going to go through three angles of attack. So, bear with me as we go through this. We are going to go through the written corporate records first, outside of accounting. We are going to go through verbal discussions, and lastly, we are going to turn to accounting matters. So, board, does this board have any written correspondence, whether delivered to the board member or at a board meeting, anything about, quote, "missing pipe funds," unquote?
No.
Okay. During Ms. Harris's tenure as treasurer and Ms. Waxman as secretary, was there any complaint recorded in our meeting minutes of missing pipe funds?
No.
Did Ms. Harris give a resignation letter, and have we retained this corporate document?
Yeah, right there.
Very good. Very good, thank you. While I will not ask you to read it, did this letter mention anything about money, either misspent money, or any concern at all about who your money is, how it was spent, anything?
None whatsoever.
Okay, so.
Cheryl, may I ask you also?
No, this meeting is not to be interrupted until questions are permitted.
Why is that?
Please hold your questions.
I would like Kathy Lewis included in this. She was at the meeting where I asked about it.
Could we please ask you to hold the question?
I see no reason to hold it when it's ripe, appropriate.
I'm telling you, please hold your question. Thank you, until such time as it is open for discussion. Okay. So, is it correct to say, then, that the then-acting treasurer of the board resigned and left no written statement as to any financial concern whatsoever?
That is correct, that statement.
Okay. Did Ms. Harris, as a unit owner, file a written inquiry with the board after she left, which requires this board to respond in 30 days per Florida statute 718? Was any inquiry received, either by you or none?
No, none whatsoever.
Okay, so this is important as we conclude the written part of this discussion, okay? That we have no written statement on file from the former treasurer. We have no written information in our board meetings, and we have no board inquiries asking for information about missing pipe funds. Okay, so this is the written part. We're going to go on. Okay, that's why, again, I wanted to go on so you could have.
I'm hearing.
You can hear the next two pieces. Okay, so, let us explore how the concern of missing pipe funds might have existed, even if only spoken about and not put into official board documentation. Okay, can any board member here identify the matter that may have troubled Ms. Harris and provide written information from our records that might address her concern?
Have it right there.
So, Stanley, you can. Before we go into details, did you, Stanley, have any verbal discussions with Ms. Harris on what you're going to detail?
Yes.
Okay, did this conversation occur while she was treasurer?
Yes.
Okay, please then, tell us what happened.
Okay, let's, we had repairs to the rear of buildings, let me have that. There was a repair in the rear of Building C. There was, there was a section that was falling apart. The original builder used sheet rock that was not waterproof. The bottom line is, it cost us $16,750 in repairs for the rear of the C building. Then, there were some catwalks, two catwalks in A and C that needed repair because the paint, or the material came up. RCI, the painter, repaired that for $2,050.
That's true.
If you take the 16,750 and the 20,500, that becomes $18,800. The problem occurred when the accounting department or the bookkeeper, I don't know what his title really was, in First Service charged it against reserve instead of expensing it against repair. So, while we were talking about the painting in the March meeting, the question came up, and I explained that there was a miscalculation or a mis, the accounting was incorrect. Instead of charging repair, they charged reserve, and as a result, their reserve was decreased by 18,800. I asked the accounting department in First Service to have that corrected. They did not correct it. So, what's going to have to happen is, we're going to go to the outside accountant to correct the entry, and what this does now is brings up the reserve, $18,800, which is the correct figure.
Cheryl, I'd like to go back to that for a moment and ask a question.
I would like you to hold your questions for a little bit. We have three angles of attack. The question you may wish to ask may be very well addressed in the questions that follow.
But it might not be. Why do you feel this is important?
I feel it is important because there is a flow as we go through each angle. We have a fiduciary responsibility.
What you do.
And interjecting with questions without us covering the written, verbal, and accounting things means you are asking questions before we give you a complete picture.
But your picture is erroneous, and that's why I'd like to ask the question.
Then, please hold your questions, correct it. Please allow me the opportunity to do the normal corporate process of addressing all documentation.
That's a nice corporate process, but what Stanley has said is inaccurate.
It is a fiduciary responsibility of this board to present the information and then allow you to have questions. Please let us present it in full. You will not be denied your opportunity to ask a question, and your question will be taken seriously and addressed similarly. Thank you. All right. Do you have invoices for these repairs, Stanley?
Yeah, right there.
Thank you. Do cash flow reports show that these payments were made? And do the First Service reports match the amounts shown on the invoices?
Yes.
Do our bank statements show that the amount withdrawn from the bank, no more, no less, is what we were supposed to pay Moscow and RCI? So, we got, the bank statements match what is in our lines. Is that correct, the withdrawals?
Yes.
They cashed the checks, and that's what it was. All right, so everything matches, the bills, First Service, and the bank. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that correct? All right, now, when I think of missing funds, and I hope you feel similarly, I think of money that's unaccounted for, money that went somewhere it's not supposed to go. And remember, that's what this meeting is about. This meeting is about money going where it wasn't supposed to go. It's not about anything else.
And is it about how you feel about it?
No, it is not about how you feel about.
So, let's leave your feeling out.
Well, she is running the meeting.
She's doing a very good job. I think we're both doing quite well.
This is not, this is not a both discussion.
Because she just added, "I feel."
Why don't you let the meeting go on? Stop interrupting all the time. Why do you think you have to wait till the end? That's the way it goes.
It's not. Florida statute says that the.
Let the meeting go on.
It's not the procedure.
We are assuming almost a forensic investigation of an alleged assertion of serious.
When you are doing a forensic investigation, you will do it.
You let the facts come forth first. You will have your time to speak.
But I repeat, not a fact, but do continue, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have three facts at this point in time. We have a fact that we have invoices, we have a fact that our financial report line items match the invoice, and we have a fact that the checks were cashed in the same amount that the invoices were, had in them, and that were in our reports. So, since this interruption, let me revisit where I had stopped, which is, when I think of missing funds, I think of money that is unaccounted for, money that went somewhere it was not supposed to go. Do you, Stanley, think any money went where it was not supposed to go?
That went to pay the bills.
Okay, so it seems, as you've well stated, that our reserves look a little bit depleted, and our repair bills look a little bit small because of failure of First Service to correct this bookkeeping problem on these two invoices. Is that correct to say?
Yep, absolutely, because we attempted to get it corrected, but for some reason, it was not.
I have a question.
Please hold your questions until the end. It is coming soon.
It's in reference to exactly what you're saying. You're questioning something that you knew where it went, but it didn't go into the right place.
That is correct, and my next sentence is, is it correct? An excellent point, however, please hold your questions. Is it correct to say the money is mischaracterized? Much as happens in your checkbook register, let's say, if you write something to Household Goods instead of Groceries. So, it looks like you bought a bunch of furniture, when in fact, you bought food. Is mischaracterization an accurate word for what happened on these two invoices?
I can't think of any other, yes.
That's what it is. It's mischaracterized. It is not missing. It is mischaracterized. Do we believe this board is a man who is characterizing it and having an employee fail to make a quick fix? It's what it looks like, isn't it? Needs to get fixed. Do we believe that fixing the error was delayed for end-of-year audits or turnover personnel? Does First Service wish to make any statement on, on the business process of fixing this mischaracterized invoices?
Their accountant, their accountant will be called to adjust that.
The accountant will be called to adjust it. Thank you. Okay, do we, the board, believe that there has ever been any alleged missing pipe funds coincidence with Ms. Harris's time on our board as stated in social media? Again, I'm going back to the social media assertion.
No.
Okay. Do we, the board, believe that either of these incidents, this is the board response, weren't using the phrase "financially questionable ways," which is what I'm quoting from the media, to describe our president as exists in social media?
Yep.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think you're financially questionable on these two matters.
No.
Okay, do we, the board, while acknowledging these bills were placed against the wrong line item in our cash flow reports, do we believe that the officers have continued to act as good fiduciaries?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do we, the board, believe that the timing of the social media has been divisive and disparaging to the president and harmful to our election process? Yes?
I'll answer yes.
Yes, it does disparage the entire board, which is the reason we're.
The entire board, not just the president.
And in fact.
You're saying this one's missing, that's accusing me and her and everyone, and I refuse it.
You can't refuse an accusation.
If this continues.
You accuse me of torturing.
If allegations continue, this board will continue to meet and talk about them with you. However, I will tell you, if these allegations continue, you, as unit owners, should worry about this. This is not doing anything to help the reputation of Height and thus your property values. We wish this to stop unless there is merit to the allegations, in which case, we, as fiduciaries, must push to its completion. Okay, I now turn to homeowners.
Why did First Service take so long, or didn't it, to fix this $18,000? It's been going on for a while. Why did it take so long to move it?
It's still not moved.
It's still not moved, so who's responsible for not doing it? Why is it taking so long to do?
I think it is already done, I think.
We paid First Service, and they're not even doing a good job. And that's what's causing this thing now. If it was fixed right away, they wouldn't even have this thing.
True, good point.
I concur.
Other questions?
Who's going to be responsible for the outside accountant to fix it? Are we going to pay for that from our fees?
No.
That's a fact.
That's a fact. How do you know?
They are our agent for handling financial matters. There is no other authority to ask on this. That's their job. And an error was made.
So first service is not responsible for that fee?
First service can choose to absorb that fee. There clearly is a fee. It is a microcosm of a fee because it is simply reallocating two line items. It probably, in point of practice, will happen quite quickly. But again, that's their job to absorb errors. It's part of doing business.
I'd like to say something here. It is not something where we put it in the wrong place. You can take, because it had to do with prior to the painting and part of painting, so it came out of painting. Could it have come out of deferred maintenance? Could it have come out of operating? It could come out of anything you think. So it wasn't put in the wrong place. But, and it shows on your financial that it came out of painting and where it went.
Oh, yeah, it showed. Absolutely, it would come out.
When you come to the painting, you reduce that amount for painting, but at the same time, when you were going to paint, you were gonna have to use some of the deferred maintenance also.
So the question is, is because this is a matter related to painting, and because we are starting painting this year and in fact, have been doing prep work, one could choose to call this a repair, or one could choose to cause, call this the start of a paint job. It's probably exacerbated this problem.
That's what the difference was.
I understand that. That's what exacerbated this.
You don't wanna let me put something in the wrong place.
Okay. Yeah, and I understand that. The question is, this board would like to, because the painting had, and I will get to you. This board had some choices as to where to put it. It should have, since this paint contract has not yet started, it should have gone in the repairs line. That is where this board would like it at place. Okay.
We brought this to the attention of Dell, who was handling the books at that time. For some reason, he did not make the reclassification. Going back to my old days, when I used to be an accountant when I went to Human Resources, the entry should have been debit expense repairs and credit cash. They didn't do it that way. He debited reserve erroneously, and we brought up the fact that has to be corrected, and it was never corrected. I'm not a CPA, but I did accounting work. And I can do simple debits and credits.
Cheryl, to answer this now, to go back to the first meeting where Kathy, you were there, Stanley, you were there, I was there, when I said, "This is not making any sense. I'm looking at this, $18,000 is missing from painting. How are we going to pay to paint when there's $18,000 missing?" Kathy's response was, "Oh, that looks odd. Oh, that must have been the repair to the back of C. I think it was seven or eight thousand..." It certainly was. And it was quoted as costing somewhere around seven or eight thousand dollars. As the treasurer, I asked repeatedly to see the invoice, to see the receipt, to see the line item, which brings us to the big question of, I was the treasurer for 18 months and not allowed to see records despite numerous times asking for them. It is absolutely true. You can ask numerous people who witnessed it. But more importantly...
And when you said 18 months, when did you become a director?
January of 2018. All of 18, and till May of 31 of 19.
I don't recall you ever mentioning to me that you requested the invoices because I could have gotten them. I have it right here.
This was in the March meeting, when we had our meeting where I resigned, and I sat there with you and Sandy, and I explained to you why I was resigning. I said to you that a year and a half I was treasurer, I was completely blocked repeatedly from seeing a checkbook, from seeing reports. I could get some monthly summaries.
Now, 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 may I ask? Did you receive any information? Did you tell any other board member about your frustration with Stanley that you were being stonewalled?
I said March. I mentioned it April. I mentioned it May. I told all of you. You were neither Louise nor Helen were on the board. Let me repeat. If you look at the March meeting or the April meeting, whenever this first comes up and then the next meetings, you were absent, Shiv was absent, Cheryl was absent, and there was no first service rep at the meeting.
I hear you clearly that you believe you were stonewalled on getting data. Is that a correct statement?
That is fair.
Okay. What would be your recourse if you feel as a treasurer you are being stonewalled? What should you do in your fiduciary role? Because you have an action to take if you believe you're being stonewalled.
I took every action that I felt was appropriate. You can't tell me what I felt.
No, no, I'm not telling you what you felt. The fiduciary action, if you are not receiving pertinent data, if that assertion is true, your fiduciary action is to put it in writing in this board and file it and ask for the board to respond in 30 days. We have no such inquiry.
And Stanley, I'll repeat to you. You do not recall in the year and a half me ever saying to you, "I can't get records..."
Because when I make a telephone call based on a complaint, I get results. You never gave me that complaint to get the results because with my...
Repeatedly.
Come on.
By my, as a fiduciary, if you are not getting what you need, you elevate it. Do you remember those who were here when I was unhappy a few weeks ago with the letter that was going out for our coupon rates?
I remember.
I actually beat that bloody meeting to death. That meeting was tabled.
So I heard.
I remember.
That meeting was tabled. Those letters didn't go out. And now you have an improved coupon letter. It not only shows the coupon rate that you get, but it shows what I wanted. It shows an item called total income, total expense, and now you can see our budget is balanced. That did not exist before.
Excuse me. Pardon me for one second, Stanley. Why do you have a problem with those dates? Cheryl, Shiv, Sandy, and I were all elected at the same year, which was for the 2018 year. We were then unopposed for 2019.
The dates of your tenure have nothing to do...
No, they are, they're having a sidebar.
I'm going to correct the error. It has nothing to do with correcting the assertion we are trying to counter today. I am explaining, however, as the position of treasurer, even when it is unpleasant, even when it is ugly, even when you are stonewalled, it is more important than ever to put your complaint in writing so that this board can take care of it. That is the job of treasurer. So if it is not in writing, I understand that verbal discussions were had. I understand Stanley told first service. First service acknowledges that request, and first service is going to fix the late process to do this. The assertion is here, are there alleged missing funds? No. Sandy?
First service works for us.
Correct.
And we pay them a lot of money. And I think a lot of this might have never occurred had first service done their responsibility and insisted that two signatures be on a check. Helene asked to sign checks at repeated times at meetings. And first service has never asked her to sign a check.
Your comment is indeed quite worthy. How can we elevate the visibility of financial data and go over cash flow in a more transparent process of board meeting? And I think that that's one way of accomplishing what you want. I agree with you entirely. The ability to go through cash flow statements and see this at a board meeting more readily would be beneficial. And the business process of responding would also be more beneficial. I hope you come to future meetings and let us discuss ways to make that even better. Good point.
I would just like to reiterate, when we did bring this up and Kathy said that the money would be put, quote-unquote, "put back," which we agree is a clerical movement of monies back.
Money was never taken. It wasn't, it had to be reclassified at an accounting point.
When you are reading financial papers to tell people what's going on and have to give numbers at a meeting, it helps to know. When I see on that ledger sheet minus $18,800 for painting when our painting had not been done, it was a reasonable question. When the question was posed to first service, they said that $10,000 of it was going back, that it was an $8,000 repair.
There was no $8,000 repair.
I, I am hearing you. But again, because I couldn't see anything. And then at each subsequent meeting, Kathy said, "It's going to go."
You're saying money was taken. The proper accounting term is to reclassify.
Do you want me to say the $18,000 was in brackets as a minus, not a plus?
I'm trying to go to the crux of your problem.
Please come in.
Which is the complaint of not seeing data.
Yes, thank you.
All of this comes to your complaint of not seeing data. You needed to fix that problem by hook or crook. You needed to either get the corporate attorney. If this was true, the thing is not to sit here and say things were misdone. The key is to use the resources you have power.
I think it's fair to say things were not done correctly. I think it's fair to say...
I think it's fair to say that. It's fair to say that you had other resources at your avail to break any stonewalling that you had. The most powerful one is the one forced by court of law, which is to submit an inquiry. This board cannot get around that. You could have submitted an inquiry saying, "I have not seen these, and I need it in 30 days." And we would have been forced to do it. That was your ultimate power.
And I believed saying it in an open meeting was adequate with Kathy acknowledging it. I understand that you're saying it's not, but that is what I did feel at the time.
Okay. We are now getting beyond the subject of this meeting.
Rein it back.
Which is what you feel about being a treasurer and the resources at your disposal and what your power was, which is completely distinct from the topic of this meeting, which is, are there any alleged missing funds? We are responding to a newsletter, and we will continue to do so anytime we have someone say that we are not acting as a fiduciary. Can business processes be improved? Yes. Yes. Absolutely. We will strive to do better in both communications and in matters of this, if the interest is there. Obviously, we don't normally have this attendance at a meeting, and basically, the financial reports get read, and that's the way of things. But, Barbie?
I, I, I really don't know. I don't understand a lot of this. It is alleged that $18,000 is missing.
No.
That's what it was. It was alleged.
What? It was alleged.
Please continue.
It was alleged. $18,000 is missing. At the same time, the board tells us that there were two repairs. One for $16,000-something and one for $2,000-something. Okay? Now, if the $18,000 that was missing went into your pockets, wouldn't the vendors be asking for their $18,000? Or they want to forget about it?
Absolutely.
I think that's a little nebulous.
I want you to know that it would have to be not an individual because our checks require two signatures.
Gee, Louise, did you sign them?
All right. Don't interrupt me. I didn't interrupt yours.
Stanley, seriously.
Don't point your, don't point your finger. Don't point your finger. Keep your finger down.
Cheryl, you know she's saying inaccurate stuff.
She's pointing a finger out here when she just called him out on that.
Calm down, please.
Calm on down, please. We don't need anybody with heart attacks.
Sandy, Sandy, yes, I'm with my friend, please. She's not pointing at him.
Yep. But she's pointing fingers.
Pointing out here.
I don't think anybody should be pointing fingers.
If Audrey feels he's being pointed at or picked on, he can say something.
Yep. He did.
He did. I did. He did.
Okay. I'm just saying, I'm saying Fred, you should not get into this conversation. She is not pointing at you. He's a big boy. He can defend himself.
Anybody can get in.
He's got somebody next to him to help him too.
The word went around that $18,000 was missing.
It was.
I have worked for this organization for 30 years, and now a penny was unaccounted for.
No.
Yeah, Cheryl, rein this in.
And I'm saying that you made that remark.
I'll repeat it.
Missing money means money is not where it is supposed to be. It is in someone's pocket. It is not declared. It is in either, it is, it has been somehow hidden from books. from books.
No one ever claimed it was in anyone's pocket?
No, no, I just heard the word missing.
It's missing.
I'm defining as a fiduciary what we are talking about.
How can money be missing?
Because it wasn't on the financial statement.
No, it was on the financials.
No Cheryl, it wasn't.
Eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
Cheryl, do we want to get a projector and put up the thing that says eighteen thousand eight hundred out of painting?
We certainly can release references needed, any homeowner has ability to request financial statements. What the bottom line is here is that the eighteen...
We're going off on a tangent.
Exactly, we are.
Let's go to the agenda.
The eighteen thousand dollars was in the month it was incurred and paid out to the bank because are we on cash or accrual accounting Kathy? In other words, do we report cash flow on our reports as it occurs or do we report it as it is invoiced? Are we on accrual accounting?
Right, okay.
Those corporations are on accrual accounting. Accrual accounting means that it showed as deducted and shown as an expense in the month the invoice was sent. The responsibility of first services to handle accrual accounting, they do a reconciliation process which shows when the bank accounts come in that the eighteen thousand dollars which is shown as deducted matches what is shown in the records. So that is called a reconciliation process, much as you do with your checkbook, except you operate on a basis of when the cash is actually taken, that's the date that you put in your checkbook. That money was shown as deducted and paid. The issue is, and you can understand this is an issue of human error, they're going out and doing a painting job. Everybody knows the whole new painting improvement thing is coming up.
It wasn't a painting job.
It was a repair.
It was a repair.
Exactly, but it involved paint. It involved paint. Imagine the accounting person sitting in a remote office.
Dell is not just an accounting person.
He's not in our knickers either about what we're doing on a day-to-day basis. He handles the bills. It's a repair and he put it on the reserve line for painting, okay? That's not an egregious mistake, that is a human error.
And when it was brought up, if they had said, "Oh, we made a mistake, let's fix it," wouldn't that have saved all of this?
It did. Do you think we are pleased about spending this time over this seemingly inconsequential matter?
You all seem to want to be here.
Time out, time out. The accusation came that the board took eighteen thousand.
That is not what the accusation is. It said eighteen thousand was missing.
You're putting a spot on everybody on the board.
Can I please be...
The problem was...
Stanley's speaking.
The problem was an accounting problem. It was misclassified and that's the terminology to be used. Money was not mishandled or taken.
Excellent, why wasn't it taken care of the next month?
Because I brought it to the attention of the accounting people and they didn't do it.
I'm asking...
You've asked us multiple times, it's because someone failed to do it, that is the answer, it is a human error.
But that's, so every time I went and...
You cannot imply the board did anything wrong. It was the accounting people that made the error. And numerous times I asked them to please correct the error, which they did, period. And because of that, the implication is that eighteen thousand dollars was missing. There is nothing missing at this point. It is bad accounting. It was misclassified.
And we all agreed on that.
And it was misclassified because of the very thing I just told you, the work involved painting. No one bothered to make a phone call and probably didn't even feel it was that particularly relevant because you know what, it showed up on the bottom line for dead ones. Myra had a question first, Harvey.
It's not a question, it's a statement. I am furious, Helene, that you walked around and knocked on everybody's door and told them that funds were missing.
I did not do that.
You acted because we met and the catwalk.
Yes, we did.
And you said to me, "Oh, you never know that I was treasurer and your innuendos..."
That's not true. You asked me why I resigned.
It was absolutely true that you acted...
Cheryl, again, do you want to rein this in?
I have allowed you to go on about how you feel about this.
I'm allowed to talk also.
I wanted to keep this on missing funds only.
Which I think we're covering well.
It went far beyond that. They blatantly, she blatantly, blatantly smeared the board, smeared Stanley and knocked on everyone's door and I think this election should be completely redone because I don't think it's going to be now a fair election with Fred Hadley getting into the mix of it and endorsing her, but not, forget endorsing, I don't care who he endorses. What I care about is that it was blatant smear of, "Heh, heh, heh, this is what they did and this is..."
Cheryl, really, you're really letting us rant?
You were given an opportunity to talk about your role as treasurer.
I am so angry.
I don't care if it's a rant or not, both were allowed an opportunity to present their perspective on the environment.
So if she's saying something untrue, I'd like to rebut and simply say that when I knocked on every door and asked for people's votes and hopefully many of you will remember when I did, that I said, "This is my platform," I have a copy here.
We're just not campaigning.
I'm not campaigning. I'm not campaigning, I'm telling you...
I want you to respond, you have, you are allowed to respond only to a rebuttal to a direct statement that Myra just made.
Myra said, "I smeared the board," I did not. Myra asked me, as I was campaigning, bringing my brochure and handing it out and talking to people, I, Myra asked me, "Why did you resign? I've only lived here two years, I don't know a lot of what went on." And I told her I resigned because number one...
No, no, this is not what Myra asked.
She did, that's indeed what she said. I'm willing to stop Stanley, I'm not going on, but that's what she asked.
Did you give me say one election word? I haven't said one word.
But you didn't stop her when she said...
No, I did not stop.
She brought it up.
But I'm not an idiot.
She brought it up.
But I'm...
We're not saying anything about you running.
Stanley, you and I have always shook hands on this. Stanley and I are fine in case anybody wants to know. Are we fine?
That's not relevant to the subject of this meeting.
So everybody can calm down.
So just let me understand something because I'm not here full-time and I get a lot of the information from sources that we're all aware of, okay? If there was an error in any amount of money that might have come up, couldn't that have been brought to our attention earlier where it didn't have to get to this point? Couldn't that have been, I mean, let's call a spade a spade. Notes are going in our doors, meetings are being held, I mean, if you're going to be transparent and there's a question about funds, no matter where it went, whether it was an error on first service point, you have a robocall to tell us to move our cars, but you can't give us a robocall to say this is where the funds went?
Have you submitted any requests for meeting minutes? That's one recourse. Another recourse is...
I know, I appreciate everything having it in writing, that...
Well, it's required by law.
You're right, you're right, in the corporate world, you're right, in the corporate world when you give a donation or you give a bonus for salary, it's stated at that, it's not on a line. I agree with everything you say, however, in the real world, we're in a community where a lot can be done verbally without going through the corporation.
Florida statute seven eighteen requires that everything we do be documented in public, in our...
Okay, so if an individual questions an amount that was placed in error, couldn't it have been resolved way before all of this?
Oh, I would certainly agree that I had hoped this matter would be resolved and that we would agree, this has been a lengthy process that has burdened us all. You are absolutely right.
So then throw in a robocall and say, "That error that people might be questioning unfortunately has gone to the wrong line."
Actually, we can't do it by robocall and I very much appreciate your sentiment because if we could simply do it that way, we would, we are, of course, no one person here can speak for the board. When this board responds to you, it cannot come from one voice, it is required by law because we each have a vote, that we must have a form, we can't even respond to you without a form. It's that, it's that specific.
But when you know that an error is coming from first service, right?
We can't, we can't do that robocall, we can't.
Could I interrupt for one second? Time and again, I have asked the First Service Accounting Division, please correct the error.
That's all it had, that's all it needed.
So all it is, the implication is coming in this direction.
I understand.
When we didn't do anything wrong.
The other thing is, no, 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 I mean, it's a recent...
Put Kathy on the floor.
No, that's not, that's not good, right, it's not right to do that.
What's that?
It was when all the painting was going to be done and everything I'd held up with the painting, because they all argued at the meeting about the painting and to this point, we had never been in time contact, so that money came out because it was going to be involved with the painting. So there was no error.
I...
If you had Dell to transfer Stan at that point, yes, you should have...
So let me make that clear, let me reiterate what you're saying. At that meeting, you believe these funds are going to be used from reserves.
I think some of the papers going to be...
That's not what she said, you were there, I was there.
No, no, I'm quoting her now, I'm not talking about then, right now, she is saying that your accounting side, your accounting side thought this should come out of reserves. And so now, a request was made to move it to repairs. Again, I decided this as an issue of an understanding of what flavor of paint job is this? It's a misclassification.
It sounds like first service did something wrong.
But you did.
I mean, did something wrong.
Well, I'm not accusing them of doing anything wrong, I'm saying they were a little slow on correcting their problems.
So why didn't they do it when you called repeatedly?
That is not the subject of this meeting.
It was just a question for Stanley.
That's in the March meeting when we were talking about painting and I was going through the numbers and I said, "There looks like there's a shortfall in the reserve and that should be corrected." That was the second or third time and then subsequently I kept asking, "Please correct the error."
And we talked about it.
It's an accounting error. But the implication has come that we did something wrong with eighteen thousand dollars.
I'm running to the word missing.
And that's the purpose of this meeting, to clarify the fact that we did no wrong. It was a, an accounting error that has to be corrected because all the funds, all the proper funds are there. Once they correct that error, we have more than sufficient money for painting...
Well...
The buildings and so forth.
We don't, but okay.
But you do, because you have two accounts, you have two accounts.
If first service would have insisted and Stanley would have insisted that there be two signatures on all the checks that went...
Did you not just ask this question? And I agreed with you that more robust and transparent procedures could be used to discuss cash flow on a daily basis, that is the option.
That could have averted all this.
What does signatures on a check have to do with an accounting error?
Because I would have seen it.
Because then a treasurer would have been aware of what was, where the money was going.
The check is signed and it goes to accounting, accounting makes the...
I would, I'd love to see you try.
You don't know...
Have at it.
Fred, your accounting is wrong.
If anybody would not...
Which one is, which, who's talking?
Well, she's trying to outshout me and I'm trying to outshout her.
Sandy, as you said before, we work for you and we work what you want us to do. So if we take two signers and you don't take two signers, I can't do anything about it.
Okay then.
Nothing to do with an error in accounting, period. If you had ten signatures on the check and it was missed, put it into the wrong account, the signatures don't prove anything.
January.
It's the accounting error that was made, that's causing all this trouble and it's accusing us or it's coming in this direction that we mishandled eighteen thousand dollars. Absolutely not, period.
And I would like to say that that word has gotten around to people who are not here at this meeting and they are under the impression that there was eighteen thousand dollars missing and are on the party who started the election. We'll go back and tell those people that's not the truth.
Maybe they should have come to the meeting then.
But they're not on seats.
A lot of them.
I have a couple of questions to the board. Firstly, is eighteen thousand dollars missing for the board?
No.
Is the eighteen thousand dollars on the lawn line item?
Yes.
Well, is the lawn line item and missing equal the same thing?
No.
It certainly does in vernacular.
No, it is not a matter of vernacular.
People speaking here know what that means.
Because you're telling them.
You're trying to create confusion.
No, I'm not. I'm saying you're talking fiduciary responsibility, ten people, you tell Sandy not to talk about asking for two signatures.
No, no.
There are not Louise, get it through your head.
You don't have to look forward.
Stanley's telling you that there was one signature.
Why is he doing this?
Quiet, please, don't start it, don't start it, let me give you the quiet floor. Okay, please proceed.
Fred had...
Fred had.
Wait, 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 what does he do?
No, wait a minute. Wait a minute. That's the problem, but he went and showed, everybody was reading it, it had nothing to do with people from height. Now, other people from other, in the Century Village that are not from height are starting to say, "Oh, the money is missing, this is not right, this is not right, this is not right."
Wait a minute, if that's what I'm saying, when this guy is coming, he wrote an ugly article about Emily Swasberg, which was totally uncalled for.
Wow, talk about getting off topic.
This woman is ill and...
Stanley, listen.
Yeah, but no, I'm going off on a tangent, but you're bringing him up and he doesn't belong in this meeting.
Yes, he does, because the fact, because the media, he put the media, everybody in these, all the associations, okay?
Who read his paper.
Wait a minute, think that there were missing funds, okay? And now height is going to go down the drain.
That's right, it affects your property values, if this continues, it affects your property values.
Where did he get the information?
He got it from an individual.
Where did he get the information?
Well, I'm not going to mention who, but somebody gave the information, somebody told him and it's not...
I'm sorry, it's Stanley, it's...
There's only one person that's walking around saying eighteen thousand dollars.
But it should have stayed in height.
Stanley, it was quoted.
I'm not running here.
No, I'm telling you that I never said I didn't say it, it's quoted.
Helen, please break up here, there's been a hand behind you, please let Myra go first.
So the question being is, you'll see a rebuttal hopefully in Fred Hadley's newsletter on Friday, but I think the board needs to rebut...
He does not rebut.
I think you need to do something to, because social media is very...
Yeah, we, the board has not, you've noticed, we've not closed this session yet, the board has not yet made any motions because we wanted to give the opportunity to speak.
So, so my feeling is, there has to be some sort of statement from the board to Fred Hadley because he actually, he said in his letter, "If things come to light," that things are, you know, what he says, I don't have his exact quote, but...
His method of operation, he never recants or...
I know, but you need to make an effort to do that.
I heard your opinion, it's very good and we will take that into account, we are, thank you for speaking. Helene, did you have something else?
I wanted to know again if the law changed about the bonuses, are they being given, they're not, you're allowed...
We're not.
But you are allowed to? The board, if the board chooses?
If you follow the new procedure, you can do it.
No, so here...
And you have to have...
It's a bylaws of manners, you would have to have a unit owner...
Sixty or sixty-seven, sixty-six.
I think seventy-five percent.
If a unit owner's agreeing to do it. But, there's also a lot of work in there, you've got to get a W four form, you've got to...
I'm not saying either which way, I'm just clarifying.
It can be done if you follow the new procedure.
Think about businesses in general, of course...
Can I say one more thing? Our attorney advised us not to continue the program of giving out bonuses or whatever it is. The same attorney is the attorney for the association that was involved in this originally and told both of us, "Don't get involved, forget it, it's too much work to do and it's not worth it." So, we followed our attorney's advice, we discontinued. I feel bad for Moxie, I feel bad for all the others, but it must...
Absolutely, yeah, this individual's...
I really shouldn't be saying this, we also gave to the mail person and she was elusive too.
Right.
Yes.
A question concerning, if there were two signatories on a check, or three, whatever number you choose, would the second and or third person have seen that this money was misplaced?
Now, I'm going to answer the...
No.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I understand that you have, that you have mentioned a change in procedure as a way to elevate visibility to the treasurer and are suggesting, quite reasonable suggestion, that a modification in a signature process would be of benefit. Am I correct?
Yes, yes.
You're suggesting this process, and indeed, it is a process to consider. But let me tell you another process that is of even greater benefit to the board as a whole and to our unit owners who attend the meeting, which is at every meeting, one could choose to tell the checks that were written in a particular month and one could chose to show on the line items, the burn rate, the percent spent, the accrued spending by category against a cash flow report. Your suggestion is one way to do it, the suggestion I just made is another way to do it.
And not mutually exclusive.
And not mutually exclusive. There are many ways we can elevate details in a cash flow statement, okay? I want, what I am doing though is saying that these changes in business process are independent of what we are trying to accomplish today, which is to identify whether or not funds were missing. Yours is very pertinent, I welcome you bringing it and we can discuss it at a future board meeting.
Did I have any mic?
Let them bring it to the next meeting, we sum up in general, welcome.
I think Harvey hit it on the head. Had we not paid and kept the eighteen thousand dollars, Moscow builders would be knocking on my door.
That for me is the most unconvincing argument of all of it.
I didn't interrupt you on this part.
But, but, but it...
Helen, please, you're not, you're not on the floor.
You're interrupting me and this has been the problem all along, always interrupting. At a meeting, you let the speaker complete what they have to say, you then raise your hand and you become recognized. Unfortunately, you never abide by that small little rule.
Harvey hit it on the head. Marcel, thank God he's in Costa Rica right now, who could be coming at my door also. We did pay our bills. The unfortunate thing was, and I'm repeating it, maybe because I'm all of repeating it, it was misclassified by the accounting division.
Which I think everybody agrees.
There was nothing that we did wrong on our side. We attempted a number of times to correct it, but unfortunately it was not done. I'll turn the meeting back to you, we're running it right now.
Yes, and Kathy, I do understand that when the money was first spent, it was perceived, you didn't do it out of ill will, you didn't do it out of incompetency, you didn't do it out of maliciousness, you honestly thought it was supposed to come out of reserves. There was no...
Error.
Yes, there was no error and there was no malice, there was no intent to deceive, okay? Now, this board however, proceeded it as a repair and that request was made, so the appropriate way to characterize it, again, thank you, it was a mischaracterization of funds, it was not misspent funds, the funds left the building, everything matched.
Why is it taking so long to fix?
Does that conclude all questions?
Why is it taking so long to fix? If it was fixed, all this went up there and everybody would have...
You're right, I'm absolutely right.
I'm just repeating it, I can't repeat it again.
Okay, yes.
If Fan Shaw and...
I'm going to ask you, Helen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When did the numbers get done? When, when did this become an issue? What month of what year was it?
In March.
It's in January.
We were discussing the painting. For some reason, I was looking at the financial and I wanted to see how much money went because we knew what each proposal was going to cost us. And for some reason, I'm looking and I see the reserve for painting should have been higher and that's where it triggered.
I brought it to your attention.
So why was this dragged out when there were individuals that were questioning this? Why wasn't this resolved? This is almost December.
Are you saying going forward from, wait a minute, Fred, are you saying going forward from the time we met and we discussed the painting or going back?
I'm not on the board, I don't make this...
No, I don't understand your question. Is it going forward that you're saying it should have been resolved or going back we should have discovered?
Well, you can't go back.
I know, you can. The treasurer should have realized in reviewing the financial statement, but going forward, and I keep saying, we asked the accounting person who was not here anymore to do it.
The point was that the term stonewalling came up.
Stonewalling what?
Cheryl.
They were not able to get the right information that they needed back in March.
Let me just say, if somebody feels they were stonewalled on the board, you come to the president and ask him for help.
As I did.
And I think I could have gotten the help, but I haven't been successful in getting it to change it.
But I'm saying to you, perhaps, that that individual you're referring to was one of those that stonewalled the people and that's one of the reasons they resigned, that's one of the reasons they resigned from the board.
He said, you know, "You have a large expense and this is what I'm going to do with it." He never called to say, "Which account does it belong?" And I would have told him, "We're talking about repair."
No, it doesn't answer me.
If anybody, if anybody doesn't like something or feels they're not getting information, If anybody, if anybody doesn't like something or feels they're not getting information, as I did not like something about this paperwork that went out, I raised holy hell. I did it at a public meeting. I stopped it. Stanley got pissed at me. We went through it, right? Yeah, you were angry at me. Angry as hell. All right, that got fixed. It has to be brought and discussed in a public forum. This is a business. If you are unhappy, if you felt stonewalled, you come to me. You come to Louise. You go to Shib. You go to any one of us. You don't get satisfaction from us and we don't raise it at the board? You, you raise, you raise an inquiry. You had power. You had the position of an officer. You are listed at Sun Biz, Florida Corporations. You have power. Feel free to use it. That's what it's about. If you feel stonewalled, use your power.
Let's take a couple more questions.
Can I just say one thing? Um, these checks were written in October 2018. Um, and on the ledger it says Steco Paint. So that was October of 2018. You've been looking to paint the building since before that.
True.
And it's the, the fact that it just kept going and you were saying you talked to Dell in March of 2019?
I, I mentioned it before, but brought it up continuously because in March of eight, 2018.
Nineteen.
2019, if I'm incorrect, we started to discuss the painting and we had three proposals, I believe.
That went from October 2018 to March of 2019.
Et cetera, et cetera. And at that point, it, it stood out that the reserve for painting should have been higher. And that's when I kept insisting to Dell, "Please correct the entry," to bring the reserve back up to where it should be.
You're saying six months later and it's 2018, 2019?
Well, the, the painting was made earlier, but it was, it was a non-issue at that point because we weren't talking painting. We were doing other things. Then the painting came up per se in March. And it, it came up that the reserve did not seem to be adequate, even though we felt we were reserving properly. And when we did our little research and even, oh, am I saying it wrong, Helene?
It's only three years. Helene.
Helene, two minutes. It came out about the $18,000. We wanted it corrected.
The reason too, we moved from paint in March, if I recall, was we got, really, our discussions got taken over by the laundry room floors and environmental reports. And I think that is probably the biggest factor that sidetracked our conversations during that period. And then the next thing that happened.
Well, with the asbestos.
Yes, the asbestos, which changed the order of things. And then we had heavy rains so we also couldn't have equipment put standing at our lawns. There was work that was delayed because the ground was too wet. So we had a whole bunch of things that were going on. I think we have.
I mean, it's actually written here as desperation.
I think, yeah, I, I think we, I think we need to wrap it up. All right.
Harvey.
Yeah. Wait a minute. One, one question.
Did you say one thing? No. Okay, I haven't been here over two years for some other reason, but if it's about $18,500 that we're talking about for the last hour and a half, if we can't figure it out by now, we'll never figure it out. As far as I'm concerned, I know which way it goes and I'd like to get it over with. I enjoy Stanley. He's very nice, but enough is enough. And you, you've got a temper I've never seen before. And I've known you for a few years.
This is not on that.
Can we do something to get it done with?
The question was, Cheryl, on the, on the budgeting for gratuities. Is there any reason why Ainsley and.
We are not budgeting for gratuities.
Ainsley and Fanshawe. Ainsley and Fanshawe are budgeting with First Service. That's my question.
My job is not to.
He has a proper line item because I didn't.
I saw the line item, but I don't see.
And it's not my business.
No.
It's not my business with.
And it's not the business of taking up that time in this meeting.
Our interest is simply because First Service works for all of us.
No, our interest.
That's my only point.
Our interest is not to have anything to do with other associations.
Fifteen.
Our interests with our reports are accurate for us. Please don't model it with other associations. It's only our reports that matter. Yes and the bad.
You've recognized the problem. You've adjusted. You've answered the problem. How are you going to move forward from now?
Very good. Thank you.
Because if, if the treasurer sees that money was taken out of a budget for a certain thing, he has to respond to the board or in writing to First Service. How is it going to go forward?
Actually, the processes aren't even, the money that was taken out was documented through normal business procedures. It already is today. We have noted and will note in these minutes that we have the way to action in changing money from one line item to another. That is going to exist on the minutes of this report and reported. And Shib, our treasurer?
Well, I'm the newly appointed treasurer for a couple of months. To be honest with you, I, this is the first time I heard was with this newsletter. And when I heard that and I requested Cheryl and, and Stanley to have emergency meetings to clarify this thing up, you know? And Helene came to my office knocking off our endorsement.
House.
And at that time, that's when I learned about this thing. And that's, I told her at that time, said, "We're going to have an emergency meeting." I'd be, you were there, you know?
Correct. Yes.
So the thing is, as a treasurer, when, first time when I learned about it, I got this thing done, okay? So let's.
No, no argument there, Shif. Yeah, no, you're, you're correct. No argument.
I want to go on.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion then, since questions are complete.
Yes.
Since questions are complete?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again for waiting this long. We wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity to speak. I move and make a motion that the matters discussed today be placed in our written records and mailed to our homeowners or otherwise distributed in a fashion stopped by this board in conjunction with First Service.
Your report. Yes, and I want the truth.
Okay. So then you. Make a motion, the motion again is I move that the matters discussed today be placed in our written records and mailed to homeowners or otherwise distributed in a fashion stopped by this board in conjunction with First Service.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, who are in opposition?
Let me state one thing that, you know, we ran so quickly into the subject. We do have a quorum. The quorum that requires forum or people, we have, if you can count, two. I had trouble counting.
Yes, I move, second motion, I move that our minutes show that our actions on these matters do not constitute failure to act as a fiduciary for the Hite Association as alleged by social media.
Aye.
Aye.
Second motion. All in favor?
Aye. All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you. Motion accepted. Motions have been accepted. I now return control to the chair, Stanley Segal. Thank you, Stanley.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming here, for expressing their views and hopefully we explained that there was not $18,000 missing, that we're, we're following fiduciary responsibility in the proper. Thank you.
That's all she wrote. That's Helen Gemella. Sheila and Shirley are both absent. Why didn't they take a roll call at this meeting?
No idea.
Fred Hadley is a gentleman who lives and owns, like we are all owners, in a corner association. And he has a, a newsletter online that's called The Village Century. And it's, you can, you want me, I can right now send it to you. I could forward, do you have an email?
I do.
Would you give me your email address so I could do? That's good. Letter D.
Hello Fred, I haven't seen you in a long time. U, I, Z, the letter P, R, U, L, T.
D Ruiz, Pet, L O V E?